I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the flag ceremony.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How did they do?
Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, for the members of the board, there are two items to amend on the agenda this evening. Would recommend that you add item eight under new business, consideration of the acceptance of a grant award. And item nine, consideration of a teacher leave request, which has a possible executive session if it's necessary. And in adding eight and nine, move consideration of the ratification of the ed techs agreement to item ten.
I make a motion to amend the agenda by adding the following to J, new business as recommended by the superintendent. Consideration of acceptance of grant award and consideration of teacher leave request.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Item D, approval of minutes, March twentieth, two thousand seventeen.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And I'm going to abstain. Item E, communications and correspondence.
You have two letters of resignation in your packet, and I will address those in my report.
Thank you. Item F, public participation. Item G, administrators' board reports. Have a student board member report.
Hello. The EHS-NHS interacts and volunteers to help at a Hancock benefit supper at Hancock Grammar for a local firefighter in the town. The dinner was a very successful fundraiser. Student council is also preparing for Relay for Life, which will take place the first weekend in June. The Ellsworth High School senior class put on a successful highlighter dance in March with over three hundred students attending from Ellsworth and surrounding schools, and this should put us at enough funds for the project graduation trip. And lastly, the senior class has finalized its plans for the project graduation, which will be going to the Six Flags in Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Building administrator reports. Mr. Clifford.
Good evening. You have my report. I have two presentations. The first one is just of one student. And then second presentation is of our unified basketball team, which happened at Ellsworth High School for the first time this year. Each year, every principal in the state of Maine at every high school chooses a principal's award. And the principal's award, the criteria is academics, leadership, and citizenship. And to me, and most high schools, I believe, this is one of the most important awards that any senior can get every single year. And we had, this is a very strong senior class, and there were a number of names that I could have chosen and would have represented Ellsworth High School very well. This year, the recipient is Keith Gray. I like, not Keith Gray, Keith Jordan. I would like Keith to come on up, please. A little bit about Keith. Keith Gray is someone I graduated with in Vermont. So overall, Keith has a ninety-four point three-five grade point average. He's president of student council. He's participated in jazz choir, show choir, football, swimming, track. And recently, he was chosen to represent the North in the Lobster Bowl. And he's also an Eagle Scout, which he earned just a couple weeks ago. And I think any faculty, staff member, student would tell you anytime that you need help with something or, you know, you need a group of kids, you know, can they do this on a Thursday after school? Just notify Keith and he'll have a group ready. He's a terrific kid, represents Ellsworth very well. He's going to attend Maine Maritime Academy in the fall. Keith and I went to a honors luncheon, they call it, Saturday, Saturday afternoon. And there were one hundred and thirty high schools represented there. And they chose out of a hat eleven one thousand dollar scholarships. And Keith did not win one. But he did have that opportunity. And so I'd like to reissue Keith's plaque, and we'll probably do this another three or four times before graduation. And our unified basketball team, again, this was something that Mr. Frost tried to get off the ground last year, and we just didn't have the funding. But knowing a little bit more about the programs, we applied for the funding, you know, over the summer and got it. And we were so excited to have unified basketball. And I know a lot of people in this room and on the board attended games, and it was a win for everybody. The parents, the players, faculty and staff, the coaches. It was a terrific season and a lot of fun. Members of the team were Robbie Walters, Brandon Garland, Wyatt Alexander, Kyle Hallett, Keith Jordan, Renee Willett, Mackenzie Chipman, Alice Frye, Alexa Grant, Michaela Chase, Mariah Young, Scott Furley, and Christian Bamford. And the coaches are head coach Matt Wibberly, assistant coach Amanda Trigo, and assistant coach Callie Hammer, who's a student. But if those members could come on up.
I'm really appreciative of all the support that we have this year. I think what was most exciting about this year was the amount of growth that we would see from practice to practice to game to game. From having someone jump on the court with Renee to start off the season, to seeing her run up and down the court, as well as come up with our best offensive strategy, which was the "excuse me." To the extent where we would have some coaches from the other team, like, "Put your hands up." And the players would look at the other coach and say, "No, I'm not going to do that." And once again, it couldn't have been without the support of everyone in this room, as well as Kayla Reardon, life skills teacher, just recently had a baby, Amanda Trigo, assistant coach, the ed techs from that program, and just all the volunteers. Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, and the growth during the season was terrific just to watch. And I remember it was his second, his second practice. And so I asked Mr. Wibley, I said, "How's it going?" And he goes, "No, it's going really well." He goes, "But check out my practice plan." And so it was definitions, and it was offense, defense, a jump ball, a foul shot, a layup. And so he was, this was new to all the kids and what defense was and what offense was and what a jump ball. He goes, "I gotta go over all that before we even start any skills or anything like that." So from that practice to the very end, it was fun to watch. And then the last is, I just, a great thank you to Darling's Auto for donating twenty-one hundred dollars towards our project graduation. And it was the last two weeks of February, anybody that bought a car there, they were gonna donate money, a hundred dollars, to any high school that they wanted to. And so they gave us a check for twenty-one hundred, twenty-one hundred dollars last week. So thank you. Any questions?
Good evening. School news at the middle school. Right now, as we speak, there are about twelve young ladies doing the Modern Woman Speech Contest at our school, where they have a theme. This year, it's what it means to be a hero. And it's very nice. That's why I was a little bit late. Tried to get a few pictures before coming down here. But it's something that the top two speech givers will advance to the regional competition, which we will also host on April twenty-fifth. So this is done in front of judges and a crowd of about a hundred people. This past Saturday, Mary Michael Billings, who is right here, took two groups of gifted and talented students to the National History Day Competition at UMO. It's the second year that we've done such a thing, thanks to Mary Michael. And, you know, the kids didn't necessarily place, but they had a great experience. They got on a college campus. There was a scavenger hunt, and they toured all around UMO. So it was a really good experience for those students. In co-curricular news, baseball and softball tryouts are all over. Every kid who tried out made one of the two teams, which is very nice. The track team has over fifty participants. It's one of those sports grade five can do, so we have a good crowd. As long as the wind doesn't blow too hard, we'll have two home meets this year on our track. Sorry, bad topic. But, you know, we look forward to that, because it's a great time, and we look forward to using those nice bleachers. In the last month, show choir and jazz band both competed at the state level. Our show choir received the bronze status at their competition, and the jazz band received honorable mention status. And my memo to you said, auditions for the spring play took place last week. They actually took place today. And will take place again tomorrow. Too many kids were sick last week to make it to go. Parent news, we have a big change in our graduation date. We're going to have eighth graders graduate June fifteenth, Thursday, at six. I had been planning for Friday, but the class trip needs to be on a Friday so we can enjoy the later hours at Kenobi Lake Park in New Hampshire. And we'll actually be going on that trip the day after graduation, on the sixteenth. So we look forward to that, and just had a planning meeting before the speech meeting for the, for the eighth grade graduation, end of the year events. And before the next board meeting, grades four and five will have their combined concert on Wednesday, May third. Grade four has been working on with the recorders, and they'll perform those. And grade five will be singing, and it's kind of the last year that they, each grade gets together for that type of thing. And then after that, it's the band and chorus. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, what time was eighth grade graduation?
Six o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Isn't it so nice that it's light out? It's so great. We have a lot of news. Our MEA testing ended today for regular testing. The kids did an excellent job. The teachers prepared them well, and they, you know, but really what made it smooth was the IT staff. They were phenomenal, making sure the computers were out and the schedule was made. And so Jen Barry and Ginger Stone and April Clifford were phenomenal at making that work. And now we're just on makeup mode, and that should be done way before we leave on Friday. April vacation challenge, it's our last reading challenge. It's coming right up. What I tell the children is that if you don't try it, you can't get your name in that bucket that you might win a new bicycle, thanks to Brenda Thomas and Jessie and the Laguna Lodge of Ellsworth for providing those bicycles. So you just read over the course of the vacation. It is nine days. You need to read six out of those nine days. And you just bring the form back, and your name goes in the bucket. So we're hoping that we have, we hit fifty-one percent, and we're hoping it would be so great to hit like seventy-five, eighty, hundred. You know, wouldn't that be amazing? Kindergarten registration, we just had three days. We are at sixty-eight children. That's blank in yours, because we didn't have the full numbers. That's a little higher than we've had in the past. So I'm assuming that because of that, we usually get another twenty-five percent. We're gonna maybe have a record crop once again coming in, and I think that will be good for Ellsworth. So we'll know more, you know, as the summer unfolds. We're going back. It says pilot, but it's no longer a pilot. After vacation, we'll be starting back outside for our before-school recess. The buses drop off. Parents drop off regularly. They walk down the walkway. Plenty of supervision, and we're outside from seven-thirty to seven-forty-five. That makes our breakfast go from seven-fifty to eight-ten. So if you haven't had time to feed your child breakfast, we got it covered. So I just want parents to know, when we come back from vacation, we're all very excited. And our playground is drying up quickly, which is great. The other thing that starts after vacation is our walking school bus. So those parents who live on Bray and Argon and I can't remember the other street, we'll be walking and picking you up. And we're hoping that if you have not walked with a walking school bus, and you'd like to give it a try, that would be great. This is the last year of that grant, so I'm not really sure what's gonna happen with that, but it's been a wonderful, wonderful thing. Jamie Reed and Barbara Case and the PTF have put an amazing book fair together called Happy Camper, Enjoy Some More Books. And it's a buy one, get one, because we had one in the spring. And we also took that money that we, I mean, fall. We took that money in the fall, and we bought enough books that every child will, gets a ticket, and every child gets a book from the book fair. So that's pretty exciting. But the buy one, get one free is awesome, too, and all that money just gets generated back for the children. So, and we have mostly just books, which is a great thing. We, too, have a concert this week. The elementary school enjoys one after-school activity, and that's called The Music Makers. And they run from February to April. And we have our concert on Thursday night at six o'clock for third and fourth graders who have sort of tried out a club. And if parents want to know that, and anybody's welcome to come listen. And when we come back two weeks later, it is Teacher Appreciation Week. And really, it's about staff appreciation. We do everybody. The PTF asks for volunteers to bring a breakfast on Tuesday and Thursday mornings, and Morton Moo provides ice cream on Friday afternoon. And really, it's a time that we say thank you, because it is just a job, teaching and working in schools. It takes a lot of energy and a lot of time, and it's just a great way to say thank you. Questions?
Mrs. Bowles.
Good evening. First, our middle school camp on Saturday was a resounding success. We had seventy students come on Saturday morning from nine to twelve, ages ten and up, to participate in two different CTE programs. And for the first time, we debuted marine service, and we had several students make boats, little ones, and race them. So kids were really excited, and that is expected to be highlighted in the Ellsworth American this week. For the first time, and last month, I talked to you about how Blue Hill Consolidated eighth graders visited for the first time ever. Connors Emerson, out of Bar Harbor, brought fifteen eighth graders to our school, and they spent about three hours touring the school, visiting programs, hearing about the bridge year program, and talking about different opportunities at HCTC, and of course, enjoying lunch. Our student services coordinator hosted another successful financial aid night. We had families, again, from all over the county, from MDI, Deer Isle, come and attend an informational financial aid night. And we provided tacos courtesy of our Melmat grant. And also due to our Melmat grant, we have about sixty students going to Washington County Community College tomorrow to visit a campus and get them on site and learn how to do a tour. A lot of them, a lot of students in our programs have opportunities through dual enrollment and through articulation agreements with Washington County, but many never go see the campus. So we thought it was important to show them they had another option that was a little more local, where they could use some of their schooling that they've done with us and get credit for it right out of the gate. I also wanted to mention, not in my report, we did have our first Marine Service Technology Advisory Board meeting last week. And we had three colleges send representatives, the Landing School, College of the Atlantic, and Maine Maritime Academy. And then we had tons of businesses from the island attend as well. Lots of energy around this new marine service program, lots of willingness to partner, offering college opportunities for kids through the program. Maine Maritime extended a branch and kind of said, "We'll try to figure something out," which they're often, because they're a four-year school and they're private, they are very particular about their articulation agreements and their dual enrollment. But they were very excited to see what we had planned for curriculum and what our ideas were for the program. So we were really excited about that and the opportunities that a lot of the businesses said they would provide to us. I also wanted to mention, we'll talk about Skills USA and Nationals later in the meeting. But I wanted to mention, we do have two fundraisers coming up. May twentieth will be our yard sale that we're going to do, and we're gonna post soon items that we'd like to have donated so that we can make money selling certain items. And then on May twenty-third, we're going to be doing a taco night, a Mexican-themed night. We'll sell tickets, or people can pay at the door to come and have dinner that evening. Last but not least, enrollment. This is hot as a four o'clock afternoon. We're pretty excited about our numbers for the fall. I will say that I got another call today from GSA about another possible student. And we have about five to ten first-year students that are looking to come back for our second year, and we're trying to work things out with high schools. The first page, I think it's your first page, is by program numbers. And then the second page is by high school, so that you can see the numbers. I think probably one of the more interesting numbers is MDI's year-one numbers are up, as well as Ellsworth's numbers are up as well. Bucksport, Sumner are pretty stable. Narragut, Vegas, and Deer Isle are slightly up as well. Now, just a reminder, this is the first stab. So letters will go out over April vacation, offering students these slots. And typically, between the day we send letters home and the first day of school, we'll lose anywhere from ten to twenty percent of these kids for a variety of reasons. So we'll provide you updated numbers as we go. But I was really pleased with our enrollment, some different numbers. Media, very high. Some of those year-one numbers will be going in the afternoon, because we can add students in the afternoon, the way that program is, because it's so individualized. We can take more kids. They don't have to have year-one to do year-two. So we can be a lot more flexible in that. Interestingly, though, law enforcement is not full for the first time ever, and neither is culinary arts, which is interesting. That's usually got a waitlist of quite a few kids. But that happens. We tend to see with some programs, they'll have years where there's dips, and then they go right back up again. Early childhood has a waitlist right now. CNA has a waitlist. I could not accept everyone that applied. So we do have some students who currently are not in programs. They will be put on waitlists. And then as we hear back from kids that don't want slots, we do everything we can to take those kids off waitlists and slide them in where we can. But this is as current as I have, and I'm hoping we can get some of those first-year students, that five to twelve kids that we're still trying to figure out, schedule-wise, if we can get them to come back. It would be great to get us up to over, you know, two-sixty. It would be really nice for us enrollment-wise. Any questions?
It's great to see the biomedical numbers, the first year.
Yes, and I have two more kids who have taken applications that are both gonna be seniors. So of those kids that are on there, the nineteen kids, there are three that will go in the afternoon section. And then if these other two students follow through and do the application, and they meet our criteria, we'll add those two in the afternoon as well. So she'll have really stable numbers in the afternoon, and she'll have her sixteen in the morning. So I'm really happy about that, yes. Any other questions?
Good evening. For my curriculum coordinator update, together with Debbie Richards, our instructional coach at the middle school, and in conjunction with the leadership at each of our schools, we're developing a teacher's guide for proficiency-based instructional expectations for the Ellsworth School Department. This document's been shared with the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Team for feedback. And what it will have is a list of research-based effective strategies that we found in classrooms that are student-centered and individualized at many times during the day. So after additional review, these expectations will be implemented in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. We'll share that with the faculty early in May at each of the schools, so they can have a list of some of the things that we tend to see in proficiency-based classrooms, and it'll highlight some of the strategies that are most effective through research in working with students in an individualized way. Also, our big project this month has been a math resource review. Based on data analysis and teacher feedback, math teachers throughout the district have joined me and Mrs. Richards to review several research-based Common Core-aligned math resources for uses in grades kindergarten through twelve. The teachers have agreed to teach one of their current lessons, using some of the new materials that we reviewed. And they are gonna provide their feedback and that of the students. They're gonna take some of the materials that they were able to look through. We had, in some cases, six to eight different kinds of programs that have been used throughout the state, and, you know, present them and share them with the kids and see what the kids think of them, looking at the vocabulary of the programs, some of the, you know, the characters that are featured in the lower grades, how easy it is to read, if they're able to understand the reasoning processes in the resources. So the teachers have all volunteered to bring whatever resource they reviewed and show it to the students and get some feedback on what the students thought. So we have a, we have kind of like a focus group in our kids, who are the most important ones, to see what they think of the programs as well as the teachers. Debbie Richards found an excellent instrument to be able to use as criteria that are aligned with the Common Core standards. And so each of the teachers throughout the grades have used that same instrument and looked at the different resources to see how well they are aligned to the Common Core standards, to the standards that we've chosen as an Ellsworth school district, to see if they are well-sequenced, going from elementary to middle to high school. So we've met with all of our math teachers in the school district and asked them to look at a variety of resources to find the very best ones that will suit our students and help them achieve in math. So we, what our plan is, is after we've gotten that feedback from the criteria that the teachers have used, as well as our student feedback, very important, we'll then meet with grade levels to discuss how their experience with the students was, and narrow it down to two possible publishers. And that, then we'll have a smaller committee who will look at all those reviews together by each resource. And we're going to invite the publishers of those two finalists to answer questions for the faculty about those particular products. The entire math staff in the school district will then vote on the final selection at each school. So it may not be the exact same product, K-12, but we will work to make sure that there's probably K-5, 6, 8 at the minimum, and 9, 12. And then we'll have a group of teachers make sure that each of those resources are aligned with each other, so that they work well and they hand, they pass off from one grade group to the next in the, in the sequence of the standards, and can best help kids get ready for their next level of schooling. So that's been a really good process. We've been very impressed with the teachers and how well they are focusing on the different pieces of the criteria, and have been really thoughtful and come up with really good feedback and parts of discussion about what to look for and what they find is most useful as they're teaching. So I'm, again, continually impressed with the professionalism of our faculty and staff in Ellsworth. And just to piggyback on what Ms. Peterson-Roper said, I would like to make sure to acknowledge the hard work of the IT department and the Guidance Department at EHS for continuing the smooth implementation of the main education assessment and the SAT over the last few weeks. We are really lucky to have the support of April Clifford, Ginger Stone, Jen Barry, Ed Pierpont, Bev Homich, and Hope High throughout this whole process. I have some hand in assessment, and I'm grateful every single day for how much they do and how well they make things feel like it's easy, because it's a really complicated process for a lot of things. And they make it look like it's a breeze. So we are very lucky for all of them to be so dedicated. I wanted to make sure to outline that. Do you have any questions?
Good evening, members of the board, members of the
Good evening, members of the board, members of the audience, members of the viewing public. Certainly heard a lot of the great things that are going on in our schools, it's very exciting. Leave it to a superintendent to talk on a topic that's not quite as exciting, but it is important.
Thank you.
We'd like to talk briefly about what's going on in the 128th legislature, in particular with the Cultural and Education Affairs Committee. That committee is in full swing along with the rest of the legislature, considering numerous bill proposals. Included amongst some of the topics are adjustments to the starting time of the school day. Interestingly, there are some bills that are proposing starting school for high school students at 8:30. The minimum length of lunch periods, alternative models by which schools may make up storm days for teacher-in-service, multiple new curriculum requirements, amendments to the brand-new teacher and principal evaluation programs, and most notably, bills that affect school funding. And that's one to focus a couple of minutes here. Bills related to school funding include several that may impact the amount of state aid that we receive this year. Included in those bills would be proposed amendments to the funding of the teacher-retirement system, and as we've reported to you, over the past couple of years, what used to be funded completely through the state's general fund is now shared between the state and locals, which is a shift of costs to your municipality. There are some proposed amendments to reverse that trend. Transitioning the funding from public schools to charter schools, as you know, charter schools have come into being over the past three or four years, and there are a number of bills that seek to take additional funding from your traditional public schools and funnel them to charter schools. Negotiation of a statewide teacher contract by the year 2019. Proposed amendments to the recently enacted 3% surtax referendum on individuals earning more than $200,000. And probably most notably, competing budget proposals submitted by the governor, Governor Page, and the main Democrat Party. We're all familiar with the governor's budget proposal, which was submitted back in January. The Democrat Party released their proposal, which calls for an additional $370 million in funding for education. Certainly, there's a lot of work to be done in Augusta with regard to this, the disposition of these bills, in particular, the budget. My sense is that there is going to be some sort of a compromise, where there's likely to be an increase in subsidy for municipalities, which will be good news for us. One of the challenges is, we probably will not know that until mid-June, and perhaps not even until the statutory adjournment date of June 21st. However, with regard to that, we will continue to monitor those bills and report back to you and to our community. In conjunction with updating our projected enrollment numbers, and you heard Mrs. Bull speak a few minutes ago, those numbers are still not finalized, but they're very positive, because they'll be very important to determining the revenue side of our budget, and we can talk a little bit about that when we get to that item on the agenda. I'd like to report to you of two letters of resignation/retirement. They're actual letters of resignation. Julie Taylor, an Ellsworth High School science teacher, will be resigning at the end of the year to move on to another opportunity. And Jennifer Ramey, our teacher at EEMS, will also be moving on to another opportunity, my understanding is, to the other side of the country. We do have a list of vacancies for FY18 that have been advertised, if we just list them here for the members of the public to know. Science teacher and math teacher at Ellsworth High School, two special education positions at EEMS, speech and language pathologist at EEMS, a .7 full-time equivalent art teacher at EEMS, school nurse at EEMS, an ASL interpreter, and of course, one we reported on last month, be the principal position K through 4. And for the immediate year, and again, if anyone in the public here is of this opportunity and knows of someone who's interested, we are looking for a long-term substitute to fill a math position at Ellsworth High School for the balance of the year. And unless you have questions for me, that concludes my report.
Item H, committee report. I know the policy committee, we're going to talk about that a little bit later.
Yes, we met last Monday, and we have some policies to talk about.
Okay. Facilities and maintenance, have you met?
Yes. We have met a bunch of times, some, twice in one day, one day last week, and so we're talking about a project to reduce the impact of stormwater runoff that comes down from up where the high school is and that whole area, down into the Mill Mall parking lot, and there's gonna be a project that is gonna be partly funded by DOT because of the road construction that's going on. There's an opportunity to actually get them to help with the expense of it, to put in drainage underground, for the most part, that will go across the middle, from the middle school property, underneath the Mill Mall parking lot, across the middle school property and down into Leonard Lake. So that work is, we hope to have it start beginning of, right after school gets out, I think.
Yes, there was discussion of potentially starting it the week before graduation. I think the effort is going to be made to start it a week or so after graduation.
Yeah, we're gonna try to minimize the impact and disruption that it has on certain sports and other things, but there's, and things are still up in the air about when it can start, but either way, we might have to move some things around, but it'll be a vast improvement on what, what we've got there now, so.
I know, I know personnel, I wasn't there last week, but I know it's starting to look at some criteria, et cetera, for hiring the new principal at EEMS, and finance is working toward a budget for this year, coming near.
Budget for FY18.
FY18.
That committee met this morning, will be meeting again tomorrow, and I believe we're scheduled to meet at least one more time during school vacation week.
Okay, any videos? Okay. Item I, old business. I don't think there's any. J, new business. Student-staff presentation.
It's my pleasure to talk about the school outdoor classroom at EEMS. This is a, we have certain people that will wanna speak to that tonight. I believe you got a trifold, but it wasn't actually folded in your electronic mail. Hopefully, you got that figured out. And then you also got your, an overview of the curriculum. But I would like to introduce this year's garden coach, which is Mary Michael Billings. She's done this on a volunteer basis this year. And then I'd also like to introduce Anna Pizzullo. She is our Food Core Service Representative by way of Acadia, I won't get the agency right, Healthy Acadia. And so come on up, and they have a slideshow to present, and there'll be other people, I think, maybe saying a word or two, and you can see there's good support for this from several parents and students that are in the crowd as well. And I won't say much more at this time. I'll fill in any holes I think you can fill in at the end.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, everybody, and thank you, school board members, for giving us this time to talk about the Ellsworth Elementary-Middle School Outdoor Classroom. I'm very lucky, I think, to be garden coach, because I'm working with an outstanding group of volunteers, teachers, and administrators who really understand the inherent value in these natural learning spaces on campus. Our garden team has put together a short slideshow that highlights some of the activities that have recently taken place on campus. These activities support our mission to provide students with opportunities to integrate classroom learning into the natural environment and to foster healthy growth through active learning. We envision easily accessible outdoor spaces that are available to students, staff, and community members, who play an active role in establishing, maintaining, and promoting an appreciation for our environment. Hopefully, you will agree that there's inherent value in sustaining these spaces and in fostering a sense of natural wonder in our students. I am now going to turn over the podium to one of our most dedicated volunteers, Krista Little Sebold.
Thank you. So we're gonna take a virtual walk to our outdoor classrooms, and this is a map, a Google map of our school and some of the spaces around. So we're gonna start from a door here, walk all the way around until we go inside the playground towards the library. This is the Wild Garden at door number 10. Now you have to go look where that door is.
I mean, the sixth-grade wing and the eighth-grade wing.
Oh, you made it easy.
Oh.
The one before was the wild flower, is that one. Stream habitat and the frog pond, this is where the stormwater is designed to come, is that correct? So these fish might survive a little longer there with more water, but it raises issues about this particular habitat. And there's the frog pond, this is where the pond behind the retention pond is actually another classroom these days, new discovery since the last two years, I believe. This is the Union River Garden, which you probably are most familiar with from driving by. This is Mr. Luck's Maple Grove, there's only one tree here now, there's two. This was a staff gift to Mr. Grove, Mr. Luck when he retired, and of course, it's in the soccer field because of soccer coach and track. Arbor Day, like arboretum, it was not meant to be an arboretum, but Mr. Newhead figured out it's becoming an arboretum. So sixth grade and seventh grade. The tulip planting with the Ellsworth Garden Club, Mrs. Prust. Milkweed Monarch Habitat, which needs to be reestablished for mowing reasons. Our orchard, which is the number 15 in the state of Maine with Retrius. Life Cycle's Gardening and Pollinator, Pollinator Projects, which is in that wing. And then we go into the library. And now I pass the podium to Sunshine Barrett, which is a very strong advocate and volunteer with a whole crew of students.
Our continued success in providing this outdoor and classroom space and the resources teachers need to utilize it is dependent on much more than just the basic infrastructure of things like raised beds and a garden shed full of tools. It is dependent on maintaining partnerships with community organizations, providing resources for teachers, and of course, celebrating our most valuable players, our new garden coach, and parent volunteers, and also the volunteers that come from within the school. We have tried many different activities in our outdoor classroom over the past seven years, and tonight, we wanna share just a glimpse of what we've been doing for just this year. Our garden team, which consists of teachers, administrators, and parent volunteers, meets on a monthly basis, and in September, we welcomed Mary Michael as the official garden coach, and she has been very generous with her time and her knowledge. In the spring of 2016, we partnered with Richard Hodges of Retrius, as Krista mentioned, to bring an orchard to our campus. Many students were involved in this process, and we look forward to the day that we'll get to taste the fruits of our labor. As Krista mentioned, we're the 15th school orchard in the state of Maine under the Retrius program, making our school sort of a leader in the state in this area. Since 2014, we have contribute, a continued partnership with the Ellsworth Garden Club, which includes an annual pink tulip planting and an arbor day planting in conjunction with the Association of Retired Teachers. This partnership offers us support for garden teaching activities. They help fund materials and are a hard-working and knowledgeable group of volunteers that have also been very generous with their time and skills. Three years in a row, we have entered our very own garden produce, both in the Blue Hill Fair and the Common Ground Fair. This school year's entries resulted in cash prizes and seed coupons that paid for all the seeds our teachers requested. We call this coming full circle. Our Food Core Service member, Anna Pizzullo, and parent volunteers like myself, make classroom visits to teach about gardening and nutrition, and when the season allows it, we have tastings of our own school garden produce. It's lots of fun. In addition to tasting what we've grown in our school garden, Anna facilitates monthly taste tests during lunch. Not only does this allow students to try food in fun and different ways, but also new menu options are introduced in the cafeteria. And my row of kids over there love those tasting days and give 'em. A middle, the middle school art club, led by our art teacher, Jen Ramey, who's here with us tonight, have created really beautiful ceramic fish that, ooh, there they are, yay! That, just to help enhance our gardens, but also, they'll be able to provide some extra educational opportunities as we use them in creative ways. They're also planning to paint a vibrant mural on the shed in the Union River Garden space. And that, the idea there is to keep things colorful and happy throughout the winter For the Love of Food is a gardening and cooking club for the middle schoolers, and it meets weekly. This is another opportunity for students to deepen their understanding of the food system by preparing simple recipes, as well as getting their hands dirty in the outdoor classroom. And at the end of each school year, we have an end-of-the-year garden potluck. This year, we will include interactive art projects, plantings, activities, and an art walk showcasing student artwork. We're really excited about that, and you're all welcome to come participate. We have amazing community partners. The community has really come together to make all of this happen. Local businesses, community organizations, parents, teachers, staff, and administrators have all played a part in the educational fund we've had in our outdoor classroom this year. I'm gonna turn the time over to Anna, and she's gonna tell you more about what she does.
All right, so as our three-year partnership with Food Core comes to an end, it's especially important to consider the future of our outdoor classroom space, spaces, and garden-based programming. I, along with my predecessors, Isabel, Neil, and Ally Mediate, have worked toward creating a school-wide culture of health in Ellsworth, and I'm so proud of the progress that has been made on this front in the past two and a half years. The commitment and passion that these garden champions, standing before you or sitting before you, have shown you is, have shown is truly incredible, and I have no doubt that EEMS will continue to provide outdoor classroom experiences that teach our students to be good stewards of human and natural communities. In helping Ellsworth schools prepare for this transition, a large part of my service has been focused on putting together a K through 8 standards-based outdoor classroom curriculum to ensure sustainability, but also encourage growth of this programming. And I'm gonna let our curriculum coordinator, Rachel, tell you a little bit more about this.
Since I've been here for three years, I've been so impressed, even before we became the Ellsworth School District again, I've been so impressed with the volunteers who have contributed to the garden even before Food Core started here. I met Krista, and she started telling us about all the things that were happening in the garden, and we've been able to build and build and build, and I've been so impressed with the dedication of the volunteers, and, and now Mary Michael and Anna. So what we've done to support this growth is not only as a volunteer effort and with the grant of Food Core, but we've also incorporated the outdoor classroom into its own curriculum that parallels the new STEM Scopes curriculum, as well as the middle school science curriculum. So through working with Anna and Mary Michael, we've developed one activity that each child will do in each grade. And so every teacher, if they are comfortable with gardening, some, many of them were doing this before, but now even teachers who are just learning about gardening will have support to be able to do an activity in the, in the, through the curriculum, so that every child in every grade throughout the school will always be working in the outdoor classroom and see the connections to science and math and language arts and social studies. So as you can see, the STEM Scopes is the new K-5 science curriculum that we invested in last year with your support, and has been very successful. And the, each of the grades has worked with Anna and me and Mary Michael to help find links, and so with their expertise about gardening and knowing when things grow and when they come up and when they need to be harvested, they've put together this entire curriculum that goes throughout the year. So you'll see that, for example, kindergarten- So you'll see that, for example, kindergarten, and this is something they were doing before, is planting potatoes. But what's so great is when they move up to first grade, they get to harvest the potatoes they planted as kindergartners. So they're going to be able to see the fruits of their labor, if you will. So and there's been different activities where they can incorporate that into special days throughout the year, like the Maine Harvest Lunch Day. There's corn planting and harvesting in second grade. And each of these things, where you'll see the area of science, are one of the curricular fogey that we've chose in our Ellsworth-aligned standards. And so we went through to find the links that would naturally come in. And so the teachers are not being asked to do something additional. They're being able to enrich what they were planning on doing by getting outdoors and having the kids learn how it interacts in a real-life setting. So life cycles, they'll be doing garlic planting. And now in fourth grade, they just planted snow peas. And so you will be able to go and see them climb up the trellis in the Union River Garden. Then in vermiculture, the fifth graders get to deal with worms almost all year. They get to- they get to lurb them out, harvesting castings for the seed starts. And then sixth grade, they'll be sowing seeds indoors. You can go to the sixth grade classrooms and see the lights with the plants growing during the winter. So this helps us bring this- bring some of the gardening inside when we're not wanting to be outside so much. And there'll be soil study and earth science in seventh grade and sea veggies with the Maine Coast Sea Vegetables. And Gretchen, why is there- oh, I think I just stopped. There she is. And so there- throughout the year, the kids are going to be able to see the links to the outdoor classroom in science and really bring it alive. So it's something to be really proud of. And we now have that posted in Atlas. If you would like to go into our public site through ellsworthschools.org, you can go into the curriculum site and look at our aligned standards and bring up outdoor curriculum. And you'll be able to find this whole curriculum and find out where your child will get to get outdoors and apply science. I thank everybody here who has done so much work because this has enriched my job and being able to make it really come alive.
Sort of wrap things up. And then I'll read the script. In an effort to sus- ensure the sustainability of our outdoor classroom and all the program that comes with it, we've included a stipend for the garden coach and another stipend for an after-school club coordinator in the budget proposal, which we're actually going to meet tomorrow about. That's because Anna won't be here next year. She's the one that runs the after-school garden slash cooking club. So we need a stipend to keep that going. Mary Michael is volunteer time this year. We put a stipend in the budget so that we could pay her next year. However, as I noted in my overview you got yesterday, we got some really good news last week. We, along with only two other schools in Maine, were awarded the Maine School Garden Network Garden Coach Pilot Grant. And with the help of this grant, we'll now be able to cover the cost of that stipend for our garden coach for the coming year. So that's nice. There's a couple thousand dollars, Mr. Higgins, we can cut out of the budget. Thank you, Mr. Newitt. Which is a good thing. But- but we're going to have to make sure we put it in the budget for the following year because this is a one-year- a one-year deal. So though this grant will help sustain our programming as we transition out of being a Food Corps school, we hope you will consider supporting our efforts in building a strong, reliable, and healthy foundation for our children as they are the future of our community. Thank you so much for your attention. We're happy to answer any remaining questions that you may have. And I just want to add, I- I hope you get the sense that this isn't just a willy-nilly splinter group that, you know, wants to just infuse, get the kids' hands dirty, and plant some tulips. We do that, but we do a lot more, as you can tell. And it is- these are passionate people. I've learned that. A lot. And that's a really good thing because they bring that passion to the kids, and they bring it to the activities. And- and they get community support. And- and they're there, you know, setting up- setting up the garden, tearing down the garden. And it's not just them, but they involve the kids in that. And that's- that's the big thing, of course, is to make the impact on the students. So I'm impressed with the presentation myself. That was awesome. And I thank you for doing all that legwork. And I'm really proud of what we're doing with the garden. And now you can ask your questions, if there are any questions.
I think we were really fortunate to get this Food Corps grant. This is the third year of it, so we've had a different Food Corps representative in each of those three years, starting with Isabel the first year, and then Ally last year, and now Anna. Very fortunate. And thank all three of you for all your hard work.
Very much.
And- and it's really amazing how much- how much the rest of the community, the parents and teachers and staff and Mr. Newitt and administration have responded. I mean, the volunteer- the number of volunteer hours have been put in by-
Countless.
This group is just amazing. And so that just shows that I think this program is sustainable. And certainly, we want to keep it going.
It's really part of the culture of the school now.
It is.
And the taste tests, you know, they don't know when they're coming, but they come. Cauliflower crust pizza. Whoever heard of that? Okay? And, you know, that was a pretty cool thing, you know, in the- in the planting of the tulips. I mean, even if it's that- just that moment you drop that tulip in the- in the soil. And that's a pretty cool thing. And of course, you saw that there's much more than just that. But it's really a cool thing.
I do have a question. What's- what's in this cup?
It's very good.
It's a smoothie made with strawberries, banana, mango. It's a yogurt and some orange juice and a laryia powder, which is a sea-
I was hoping there'd be seaweed in it.
Silicious. Thank you.
It's very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
I just wanted to add too that I just spoke with the Friends of Acadia today through a connection that Krista made with Valley. The Friends of Acadia would like- are going to come with us and do a walkthrough of the property and have potentially grant for $5,000 the first year and $2,500 the subsequent two years to be able to support us with different activities, such as creating signage like the Acadia National Park, which they joined up with, and being able to teach kids about how to understand the landscape. So that'll be an additional piece, too. And then we're going to plan to meet with all of them in May and do walk around the property and see what possibilities that they see as well. So they're very excited, and I'm looking forward to working with us as well.
That's great. Thank you.
They've heard big buzz.
I have just one question. Is there a corresponding piece of this at the high school or an opportunity to expand this into the high school?
There- there has been an opportunity over the last couple of years. And I think that they're trying to grow it, if you will.
It appears as a highlight in the brochure that we get as eighth-grade parents. Greenhouse appears at the top of the list as extra perks. But that's still something that Anna can answer to that because she's been- the Food Corps has been working really hard on trying to generate some views out of that and huge investment.
Yeah, definitely. And I think, well, first of all, it's really amazing that our high school even has the infrastructure. We have raised beds, and we have a greenhouse there. I think it is a lot harder to get high schoolers excited about this kind of thing and also a lot harder to fit it into their curriculum just because there's a lot more going on in high school. It's like a really high-pressure environment, and teachers have a lot going on as well. But I think that something that we've kind of realized in the work that we've been doing is that it is really important to start when they're younger because then, you know, ultimately, I think that's kind of what we've been thinking that like these students who Maverick, Ho, and Kai, they are having these taste tests when they're little and realizing kind of the importance of growing their own foods will carry on to, you know, the time that they're in high school. So sometimes it's hard for me to, you know, realize that I may not be here to see all of this change through. But I think that ultimately, starting with the younger grades is really kind of the way to go. And I'm not to say that we haven't been working really hard at my school, too, but it's definitely- it has its kind of challenges, I think. Yeah.
Answer to that question as well, to add, Julianne Taylor, who moved somewhere else, was actually the founder of the garden at the middle school with another teacher. So I'm really excited to see her go because she started following this way, Mr. Newitt?
Way back.
Way back when 2000, when the school started, yeah, 2010. And but our school hosted, for some reason, was the scenario for a school food conference at the state level. And that one year, when this- I mean, three years ago, our school was the setup where all these organizations and schoolteachers came to give trainings and do workshops and whatnot. And I happened to land on the presentation that a high school science teacher did with their greenhouse. And it was- it was incredible. I mean, it was way there. I mean, it was a public school. I don't know if you can search that information. But they were using that word chemistry, I mean, all kinds of things. It was incredible. So there's curriculum out there that can be produced with that resource.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming.
Discussion and consideration of overnight out-of-state trip to Skills USA Nationals.
So you should have received a bunch of information in your packet about our students going to Nationals. The two chaperones, it's all girls. Don't know how that happened, but it's all girls going this year. So Heather Pelletier, our Student Services Coordinator, and Michelle Cody are going to coach their kids. They coached at States and take them. This year, the state of Maine has chartered its own flight, which is awesome because it's about $150 to $200 cheaper than buying airline tickets. They can bring food on the plane. It's just so much easier to manage. So flights are- the other nice thing about it is we don't have to buy airline tickets right now. We can sign up for the flights and pay June 1st for the airline tickets. So that gives us a little more breathing room in terms of our fundraising. But we're actually in really good shape fundraising-wise. We've gotten a $500 donation, a $1,000 donation. And the middle school camp was $2,500. And we're awaiting- our issue 24 gives scholarships for all their kids to come. And so we've just billed them for middle school camp, and so they'll- will be receiving that money as well. And included in that is the cost of the staff trips on there as well. But in the past few years, we've covered that with an HCTC budget. And we do have funds available in the budget. So that bottom line that you see is actually going to be significantly less. The Boggy Brook 5K also brought in quite a bit of money as well. So they'll leave on that Sunday and fly back Saturday. They can do their testing on Monday. They have two to three days of competition and time to tour Louisville. They'll do- they do a lot of state of Maine activities. The state of Maine stays in one hotel. They actually take the city of Louisville and states are assigned hotels. And so chances are, we'll probably be with one other state in our hotel. They provide a coach bus for the kids and the staff the whole time they're there so we don't have to run a vehicle, which is another huge savings for us in terms of the trip. And they have a lot of great built-in activities, as you saw. We're meeting with parents Thursday night, and we're going to give them the options. Do you want to go to the Kentucky Derby and do that tour? They go to on an amusement park. They go on a ferry and go through a tour. So they- it's more than just the competition for these kids. It's the experience. And I- again, I'm always blessed that their teachers go with them. They give up a week of time and coach their kids, and it's no questions asked. They just do it. So we're hoping you'll approve, as you always have, their attendance at Skills USA Nationals.
I make a motion to approve the overnight out-of-state trip to Skills USA Nationals as presented.
Second. Discussion?
Good luck.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you.
First read of policies.
So we have two new policies for first read. One is BDE, Standing Board Committees, and that includes BDERF. And that outlines the function and operations of the standing committees. And we also have BDEE, which is- it describes the role of the new curriculum instruction and assessment standing committee.
In policy BDE, what you have is, for your first read, it's an addition of the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee?
I move that we approve the first read of these policies as recommended by the policy committee.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Mark, okay.
Second read of policies?
Okay, so there are a number of them. All but three of the policies that were put forth last month for the first read, read exactly as they did last month. The three exceptions are JLCC, which is communicable and infectious diseases. We added the word notifiable before communicable disease to clarify that not all communicable diseases require a doctor's note to return to school. JLF, reporting child abuse and neglect. The change is that staff will receive training every two years instead of every four years. And the last is KLGA, relations with school officers and law enforcement authorities. We simply added, we spelled out school resource officer in the title in addition to the acronym.
I move that we approve the second read and adopt these policies as recommended by the policy committee.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Five, discussion and consideration of the 2017-2018 school calendar.
I believe you all received a copy of this in your packets. As you'll notice, it looks remarkably similar to the 2016-17 calendar. However, there are a couple of notable changes. Before I talk about the changes, just to let you know about the procedure. First and foremost, we provide a draft, and we get the feedback of our staff members. We've taken that feedback under consideration. We also have to work very closely with the other high schools in Hancock County so that we can meet statutory requirements with regard to CTE calendars and common days. The biggest changes that you will find in this calendar compared to last year will be at the beginning of the school year. The first student day will be September 5th for students grades K through nine, as opposed to starting before Labor Day. For the past couple of years, the way the calendar has fallen, we've started before Labor Day. We do not think it would be appropriate to bring students in for one day prior to a long weekend, so we'll start on the 5th. The other change that you will see is at the end of the school year. We've built in four storm days, which is an average amount. And we will have the final student day, if you have four storm days, on June 20th. What we have done, and we based a lot of this on staff feedback, is move the last teacher day from the day following the last student day to March 23rd, which coincides with professional development days across the county because we also felt it was important. We have such a long time between staff days in November until the end of June. There's plenty of opportunities for staff to work together, but this gives them a full dedicated day for professional development activities. Aside from that, you will find that the day is- excuse me, the calendar is very similar to last year and would recommend that you grant approval.
I move that we approve the Ellsworth School Department 2017-2018 school calendar as presented and recommended by the superintendent.
I second the motion.
Discussion?
I have a question, Dan.
Mm-hmm.
The, um, is it December 22nd, which is a Friday for Christmas vacation, is there any way to make that a half-day for all students and staff?
We- Ellsworth has typically not done that.
Yeah.
Used to.
Used to.
Been a long time.
And it's an early release day.
It is an early release day anyway.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Discussion and consideration of Maine Capital Improvement Program, MCIP, application.
Yeah, this was another thing that Facilities and Transportation had met on that I didn't include in my early report because I knew it was coming up here on the agenda. But we, the state provides an opportunity to apply for money to repair or replace a building that is in need of it. And these funds do not, are not available every year, but they are on a, as, as the, as the money gets paid back into it, it's, it's basically a bond, right? So when it reaches a certain level, they can, and make money available again. So what we do is they ask, they allow schools to apply, and the deadline for that application is this week. So the Facilities and Transportation Committee recommends that Superintendent submit this application pending board approval. But, and this particular application is for HCTC. So we're hoping that we can get that all rolling. It'll take several years before we actually have a new building if we're approved for it, but, but we gotta start now. Any questions about that?
Will it be at the same location? Or will there be a new location?
Not necessarily. The, the, the process essentially entails submitting an application, as many schools across the state will do, and then there's a visiting team from the Department of Education that will come and tour all of the sites. If you're fortunate enough to rank high enough on the list, then the process starts with, number one, looking at sites. It's possible that if we're approved high enough, they could say we could renovate the facility. If they don't and they say we can get a new facility, we start to look for sites. It could be on the same site. It could be a different site. But this is a pretty extensive process you go through for site selection, and it's, it's borne out in statutory language.
Will the program be open while the renovations going on? If you would check it?
Oh, we would hope to keep the program going without interruption. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Your motion?
I make a motion to authorize the Superintendent to submit the 2017-2018 MCIP application to the Maine Department of Education.
Second. Discussion?
I would just like to say thank you to everyone that was involved in that application. I know how much work that takes. Lot of, lot of extra work for folks, Amy, Dan, Russ.
All those in favor? Notice I never say "all those oppose" because of budget update.
And what I've distributed to members is the most current iteration of the budget. One of the big changes you'll see from the last time you saw this at a workshop or at our last meeting is we did receive numbers from Anthem with regard to health insurance premiums, and we were very fortunate. We got good news. Our premiums are not going to increase at all for next year. So we saw quite a significant reduction in the expenditure side of the budget. What this budget in front of you represents is all of the requests by our departments for all of the things we're advocating for to move our school department forward, with the exception of one piece. We've talked a little bit about the biomedical program. You heard Mrs. Bowles talk about the number of students who have applied for it, which we think is a positive trend and the success of that. We're still waiting for final numbers on the cost of retrofitting the academic classroom to a science lab. That would be the only thing that we add to this. But even without that, you're talking about the expenditure side of the budget increasing 5.58% when you include adult education. And I think, you know, let Mrs. Thomas talk about this. The Finance Committee met today with some of our administrators and we're meeting tomorrow with the remainder of them to review not just this proposal, but to talk about our priorities. Because again, we're still looking at the revenue side of the budget to determine what level of expenditures that we can afford and be comfortable taking forward to our voters for support and approval. And at this point in time, that revenue picture is not clear enough to talk specifically about. So if you would like to add to that, Mrs. Thomas?
It's always interesting to meet with the different administrators and talk about what will move us forward, what our needs are, what our wants are, and, and what we can afford to do one step at a time so that we don't have a significant increase to the taxpayers of Ellsworth. But we certainly have some, some programs that we're looking at that are going to increase some costs because they're wonderful programs that are making our school system only better.
And with regard to a timeline, and certainly the, the Finance Committee, again, as we talked about earlier, we're meeting tomorrow. We've also scheduled a meeting for next week. Your next workshop, I believe, is on the 25th, and we dedicate some time to the budget. We're required to present the school budget to the City Council on May 1st. And with whatever feedback we receive from the council, you as a group will be voting on the budget at your next meeting.
I have a question, Dan.
Sure.
I'm just thinking about the numbers in the biomedical. Are the incoming students, do they know that the program may be moving back to HCTC? Or do they believe that it's still going to be at the high school?
I'm gonna defer to Mrs. Bowles on that.
They were all told on their visits that our hope was that it would be at the academics' room, and we showed them the space, and that's where actually Sarah Petroulis was housed during their visit so they could see the space. But we told them even again today, some visited today because they did bird year testing, that it might still be at Ellsworth High School. They really want it to be at HCTC, but I've made it very clear it might be in one of the two locations because I didn't want to tie our hands.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Certainly the desire with all the work and effort that's been put forward is to house it at HCTC.
Any other questions? Thank you. Consideration of acceptance of a grant, Board.
Yes, and this, this ties into a presentation that Mr. Clifford did a little bit earlier where we had members of the Unified Basketball Team here. Mr. Clifford talked about the very positive experience for that program. Mr. Frost and Mr. Clifford applied for a grant that would allow us the opportunity to participate in Unified Track Season for the spring season. We were fortunate enough that they were able to receive funding for $1,000 to support this program for the spring. And we're asking for the members of the Board to approve accepting that grant so we can move forward to the program.
I move that we approve acceptance of the grant for the Unified Track Program.
I second that.
Discussion?
So will this, will the grant cover all coaching costs?
Yeah, the grant will cover the stipends and equipment costs.
That's great. That's wonderful. Okay. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Consideration of teacher leave request.
Yes, there was not information including your packet on this, as we, we just learned the final particulars today. But Mrs. Ammore, a history teacher at Ellsworth High School, selected to go on a tour of the Czech Republic, directly connecting to her Holocaust course that she teaches. What we have with this tour is have been able to approve three professional days, two personal days, but she is in need of one unpaid leave day to support time on that trip. So we're asking that you approve that. And under the current collective bargaining agreement, any additional leave that's not specified in the contract needs to come to you this year. That will change next year. But we're asking if you would approve that request.
I make a motion to approve the teacher request for leave as presented and recommended by the Superintendent.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Great learning opportunity.
Yes.
Okay. Consideration of ratification of Educational Technicians Agreement between Ellsworth School Board and Ellsworth Support Professionals Association, MEA/NEA.
Yes, and we were notified that the association, I know there were several members here this evening, association voted to ratify the agreement. So the agreement is being presented to the Board for your consideration and ratification. I know you've all seen it before, but there, there is an opportunity to go into executive session if you have specific questions. If you don't, you can certainly opt to take action.
I will. I make a motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement as presented between the Ellsworth School Board and the Ellsworth Support Professionals Association, MEA/NEA, as recommended by the Personnel Committee.
Second. Discussion?
I just want to express my thanks and gratitude and appreciation to the members of the EdTechs who sat at the bargaining table with myself and Brenda and Mr. Higgins. It was a very positive process all around, and I really admire the approach that you took and want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And I agree.
And we were going to express the same gratitude as well. Thank you.
All those in favor? Policy Committee meeting for May 1st. Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at 8:30 a.m. School Board Workshop, April 25th. Ellsworth School Department Conference Room, 6 p.m. Next school board meeting will be Tuesday, May 9th, 2017. City Hall, Council Chamber, 6:30 p.m.
And if I could, for the members, on April 25th, we will talk predominantly about two subjects. One will be the budget and updates from the Finance Committee, but also talk a little bit about another meeting that the Facilities and Transportation Committee is going to be having with the city, not just in regard to the Route 1A project and the project that's gonna cross over Ellsworth Elementary and Middle School, but the topic of the resumption of the Route 1A project and the relocation of the Ellsworth High School entrance and development in Ellsworth in general. And that committee will report back to you.
And did we nail down a date for our next meeting?
Not yet.
Okay.
Still working on that.
Okay. Item L, adjournment.
Having no further business, I move that we adjourn.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. 7:50?
7:50.